And for those that may not be aware, the mayor had some personal items he had to pay care of, and he will not be joining us this evening. The first item on the agenda is Item A, Waste Management Franchise Review, and with that, I'll turn it over to Claude.
Okay, and I'm going to turn it over to Steve. He's got Lisa Weaver here with him, and both of them have been the point people with respect to the discussions with Texas Waste Management. The first part of the presentation, of course, tells you that the contract that we have currently with them for waste collection and disposal is up on December 31st, so Steve's been talking to them for some time about the terms of a possible renewal, and that's the topic of tonight's discussion and presentation. So it's a pretty long one, and so no further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Steve.
Thanks, Mr. King. I have Carol Bassinger here and Lisa, both the city staff, who've been working on this agreement, and so appreciate their work. And Mr. Joe James with Waste Management, and Joe will give an introduction.
Yes, sir. Laura Henskluft of Living Earth and Lynn Landtrip on our consulting. Our slide. First of all, again, we have a ten-year term that's expiring at the end of this year. We do have provision in that ordinance to extend the agreement with some modifications that both parties agree, and we've been working on that concept for about a year and a half. Our annual CPI adjustment is how we calculate the rates each January 1, usually adopted ordinance in the first meeting or two of December, issuing a cost of service acknowledgement. It's in the agreement already of what their agreement can be increased by the CPI, and then ordinance basing the commercial rates is then adopted by council. Again, free trash service generally for all city buildings and structures, excluding those special waste, like if a wastewater plant or sludge, some of those components, but they do have a discounted rate. Two free landfill privileges per month for the residents, and currently no collection on New Year's Day, Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas. Twice-a-week collection is in customer containers, and 64-gallon carts owned by the city is for the recycling service. So a person can use trash bag, a box, cans from Home Depot, or whatever they want to use to place their trash in, but the recycling is generally by or through placement into a 64-gallon cart that the city obtained back in 2004 and '05 through the North Texas Council of Government Grant, over about $800,000 in capital costs. We do also have once-a-week bulky waste collection. This is if you have a hot water heater or mattress or something that's what they can't put in a general rear load trash truck that goes through the residential neighborhood, you can call and have that scheduled pickup on your second day. That also applies to what I consider is large amounts of yard waste, brush, et cetera, but they generally pick that up. If they can put it in the rear load on the day of collection, they will do that, but if there's an extreme amount, they'll pick it up the second day. The rate is currently 1257, seniors, it has an 80% discount, and it includes 13 cents that we currently add to the customers' bills, not the cost of service to Waste Management, but we retain out of the 1257 13 cents for our recycling cart maintenance through an outside franchise or contract. Commercial services, again, is for the collection of trash only, recycling services, collection of those type of components is an open market, so they can use the ISI, Bluebonnet, Republic, any of those folks, including Waste Management, for any kind of recyclables. Our service containers and commercial are generally dumpsters, roll-off compacters, and manual collection of bags. Those are for individuals or businesses that may only have a bag or two of trash a day, and it's not reasonable for them to have a large dumpster. So we do hand collect from commercial on some, probably got about four or 500 accounts, I believe. Franchise fee is only on the commercial only, and 17.46% of the commercial rate, and back in the years past, there was a 10% franchise fee for residential, 2.5% was for billing purposes to the city, because we billed that service, and then 7.5% was strictly the roadies or what we call franchise fee. 7.5% was on the commercial, so we kind of combined the two where when the numbers shook out 10 years ago, it came up at 17.46. And again, excludes commercial recycling. The proposed, what we would like to acquire tonight from you is some general concepts so we can continue negotiations and finalize the ordinance. What we're looking for tonight are approximately four items for residential and a couple of items on the commercial. What we'd like to seek your direction on is whether or not you would like to go convert from twice-a-week garbage pickup to once-a-week load pickup in a cart. You can do customer bag, but we'll go through some in a few moments. My staff is not recommending that going once a week in a customer container. We'd also like to seek your comments on recycling carts, whether we retain the existing city carts and future expense of capital cost to replace those as they age, and or go to a Waste Management cart, a 96-gallon cart there. And then there are several service enhancements that we presented to you. Two of them relate to basically yard waste components and brush and limbs, and the other two, one is a recycle bank, and the fourth is household hazardous waste that can go in. So those are some enhancements if you'd like. We have some matrixing in the back that can help you look at those. Again, the trash option containers is using either the customer container, bags, cans, boxes, whatever they'd like to use, or going to more of a modified, what most cities are going to now, is a cart system for their trash. This is not an automated system on the cart, they'll get confused. Automated is basically where you have a side load, and you can go down the road, there's one individual on a truck, and he can automatically pick that can up, put it in the unit. Because of our infrastructure, our streets and the parking on the streets, that's just not feasible in most areas of the world still at this time. And again, on the recycling container, if we want to use the 64-gallon carts or go to a Waste Management cart. Option one, again, repeated this a couple of times, is once-a-week trash in a 96-gallon cart. It does allow for two bags outside of the container. That's one thing we'd like for you to think about as we go on, is whether you want, if you go to once a week, having all the trash in a container and not allowing things outside of that, but that's a decision that we can make. I will offer this to you, because in the existing franchise, there were certain things that we could do within the first five to seven years of the contract, where if you want to go to, say you don't want to do all the enhancements at this point, you can add those in, where those prices would continue to escalate on the CPI, but you as council can pull the trigger to, if you want to do at-your-door household hazardous waste in the future. We did that with recycling in the last year, I believe it was year seven. You went with going to changing from every other week recycling to once-a-week recycling as a precursor to going to once-a-week trash. So there's some provisions that we can write into the new agreement similar to what we have now. Once-a-week recycling and 96-gallon cart, the same weekly bulky waste and brush pickup. Again, brush must be bundled and tied in four-foot lengths, no more than 50 pounds or what an individual can collect, leaves and grass and bags, these plastic bags, whatever you would like to use, and cannot exceed the total capacity of all of those components, what could fit in a standard pickup bin. So it's a lot of material that they generally pick up as part of the general household waste. 1146 per month, 917 for seniors, again, that's 80% of the rate, and our current rate 1257, so that there's a savings there of $1.11. We recommend this option from a cost-saving standpoint. It is a potential to increase recycling, which does have a small amount of return on a recycled product, dependent upon the selling cost of those materials. Control somewhat debris. If you have, like right now, if we get a windy day or we get a lot of animals that get into some of the bags or the trash cans, we do have some of that. There's a few days that we get some of those complaints. And for the city itself, it gets us out of the cart business, gets us out of having to spend maintenance and the future capital cost of the carts, which we estimate will be around $800,000 over the next 10 years. Option 1A is the same thing on the trash, using a 96-gallon cart, but retaining the 64-gallon city cart for recycling, same option on brush. It's 1169 per month, 935 for seniors, a rate decrease of 88 cents. One of the things that we've had to add into this is that we've got to look at this recycling cart that we now approaching 10 years old, generally has a life of 10 to 15 years. Most of our carts are in very fairly good shape, some of them are in great shape, because nobody uses them on some areas, so we'll have those, but most of them are going to need to be replaced in the next five years or so. So what we added into it is taking the capital cost of the cart and then breaking that out over a 10-year payback and start charging for that cart. So that 1169 includes 33 cents for a capital cart replacement if we go with this option.
As well as the maintenance.
And then we'd have to have the maintenance on top of that, too. So you're right, that would actually bring that down just a little bit. Oh, no, I take that back, take that back, because Waste Management is going to maintain the cart. We only have to deal with the capital cost, I'm sorry. I wonder why I didn't put that in. That's what it was, I think. Option two is using, going to once-a-week trash, one of your decision points that we need from you tonight, and but then going with Waste Management cart, getting us out of the cart business and the expense, and again, this cost 1104 does include, I'm sorry, does not include, it's $1.53 savings, but again, one of the concerns staff has is once-a-week garbage. We now have two pickup, and people put their bags out, now holding that garbage in a customer-owned box container, plastic bag, whatever, for a week before pickup. Good cost and scattering of debris, odor problems, issues of storing that in the garage, et cetera, et cetera, so this is one that we do not recommend. Next option is two.
Any difference on this one, is the recycling cart?
Oh, okay, sorry. We're on the recycling cart again, adding 33 cents to that for the recycling cart capital cost. And again, talking about having, using the customer container to store their garbage for that seven-day period. Option three is doing something similar to what we have, doing a twice-a-week collection, but once-a-week in a Waste Management 96-gallon cart. Same, everything remains the same, but it does go up 85 cents from the current cost level. That's about a 7.5% increase from the current rate, but it covers our maintenance cost. Option 3A is what you have today, basically. And this is 1352 a month, and I believe this is 7.5% increase on the rate. Again, we're having to add the cart replacement into the program for that service. Option four is going through twice-a-week trash with a Waste Management cart and a recycling cart. You can see the price jumps up, and again, the cost is going up on the twice-a-week because of fuel, number of times they're touching each street in town twice a week, and generally, fuel cost is, I think, is a major issue for Waste Management in these cases. Option 4A is 96-gallon cart for Waste Management cart for the trash, and continuing to utilize the city 64-gallon cart, again, $5.16 over that. Again, we do not recommend those because mainly of the cost increase and the serviceability of the program. This is kind of a little summary of our residential options. Option 1 through 4A, options 1A, 2A, 3A, and 4A, includes 33 cents per month cart replacement fee. And so as you see there, your once-a-week options range anywhere from $1.53 to 88 cents in savings, if you let that range there. Again, staff is recommending or consideration of option 1. Decision points again tonight are looking for a twice-a-week or once-a-week collection, your decision, your desire, what you think the constituents would want. The customer containers, whether Waste Management carts for trash or continuing those as being customer container. On recycling, city carts, Waste Management carts, again, the cart cost, maintenance-wise, if we retain the 64-gallon carts in service, Waste Management will do the repair on those, however, the capital cost, we will bear that cost, and our estimation is around $800,000 plus, and that is in today's cost, not future cost, because we will go into a replacement program. We've got approximately 20,000 carts, so we'll replace about 2,000 a year over the 10-year period. And then the service enhancements, and I think we're fixing to get to those. Again, our rate range for once-a-week trash is a savings of maybe 8 cents to $1.53. Again, you can add some enhancements, but most of the enhancements added, excluding the recycle bank, would kick you into a rate increase for the resident. Cart options, again, we feel will minimize the smells, especially if you go to once-a-week, you've got some kind of protective lid, and protection of litter abatement or litter abatement from the roadway, if you have someone places a bag once a week out on the curb, so we recommend the carts. The Waste Management carts are larger than our 64-gallon, hopefully by, if you go to once a week, that gives you more ability to encourage recycling, plus a larger container to put those recyclables in. We do have several individuals that have a second and some even a third recycling cart, so there are some out there that do utilize and do recycle a great deal. Trash carts are more aesthetically pleasing than the bags, I think we all agree to that. And again, our ordinance requires, whether it's a bag or a can, customer can or customer container, or recycling cart, our ordinance requires you to pick that cart up and take it back to the house, and you cannot leave it on the street. And it can only be placed out at the street 24 hours in advance of pickup time. Our 96-gallon cart increases the cost over using customer container trash. Again, we think this is a good proposal. It matches most of the area cities around here that are going, that still have, or that are on a cart service. Customer perception's going to be a decreased service, you're going from once a week, I mean from twice a week to once a week. However, after talking with Waste Management, Lisa and Carol and their research, we think the, outside of those specific days, most people will be able to use the cart and place all of their materials there. They can purchase, or not purchase, they can subscribe to a second cart for trash if they so desire.
At a cost.
At a cost, yes. I believe, currently, our change $5, I believe, if they need an extra trash cart. Some residents, we will have this, we'll see this, 64 gallons are too big for some folks, so we go to a 96. They're going to say it's way too big, but Waste Management does have some 64-gallon carts, but they're trying to stock their inventory with 96, that's the industry's hindered, so, but they will provide those, but they will not give a decrease on the price. So if somebody does want a 64-gallon cart, they will do that, but it'll be at the same rate, there will not be a discounted rate. The service enhancements, first of all, before we get into any questions you might have.
If the, if we switch over to the Waste Management carts, what happens to the city carts?
What we're looking at currently is to, we've asked Waste Management to look at what they can do, if they can recycle those, what we can do. They have indicated they would collect those for us and return them to our service yard, and then we would look, we're working with legal and purchasing to see if we can do some work to auction those off to a community or group that needs, that don't need to buy a ton of them, they might can buy these at $5 or $10 at least. If we can get half of the carts back, you can make $50,000, $100,000, depends on what you got back. I don't expect you to receive all carts back. Waste Management would go, apparently go through the, excuse me, the last collection day in the old carts, put the new cart out, collect the old cart, take them back to the yard, and for, we've got about 60% of the folks that run, Lisa, that are recycling currently, so you'll get about 60% of those carts back, some of them you won't, so, again, but they've depreciated out as far as I'm concerned, as far as the cost, after the, but yes, we'll be able to, hopefully be able to get rid of them and obtain some funding from them.
So either way, we're considered zero, at least internally.
Eight hundred thousand capital investment for the new city carts, if we were to go that direction.
That's correct.
You're making up, and you may have answered this, and I may have missed it, but we're making up for it, what was it, three bucks, 33 cents a month.
That's correct.
What, how long is it going to take before we pay that bag?
10 years.
Which is the bottom of the life of the cart.
Hopefully, you'll get 15 years out, the contract, or recommended contracts, 10 years with five-year extension, currently basically what it asks today or until the landfill closes.
Who's maintaining the 64 carts right now?
City. The current rate is $12.44, cost of service to Waste Management, and we add 13 cents to that rate, so for the 1257.
That covers our contractor cost, total, actually.
I see your breakdown in your itemization on that 33 cents for the new improved carts for the city. What is the breakdown for the new carts from Waste Management?
That is put into their rate, y'all have it.
We don't have an itemization on that, it's just...
We've asked for that, but it's calculated into the rate.
But it is less than what the cities would be?
No, because a 96-gallon cart is going to cost you a lot more. I mean, just going out with...
I agree, cost will be there, but it looks like if you would go to the 96, instead of staying where we're at, the, it's 10 cents less from the total usage.
We have, we have a term in how they calculate such a difference.
Volume by...
Volume by...
Right. That's all I had, right?
By the tire.
Yeah, sure.
What you're saying, if we went to Waste Management on both carts, is that what you're saying? It's a, it's a $4.93 increase.
I'm looking, I'm looking at number three.
I'm looking at number four, because we pick up twice a week right now.
I'm looking at number three, just looking at number three, which is generally what we have now.
Is three once a week, or three, three?
Two times a week.
Two times a week.
Three is just the recycle cart, is that all you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay, that's what I didn't get.
Which would be basically what we have now with their, with their, yeah. But if, the city part would be 31352, and Waste Management would be 1342, which is basically what I think we have right now, right?
Three, or 3A.
Three is what we have now.
You're comparing 323A.
To what?
You're comparing 323A.
Yes, that's right. We, it's cheaper to go with a Waste Management cart for that level of service.
Or recycling.
Well, for the whole thing, both together, which is considered the same.
Well, you have a three, it's customer container involved with it.
Yeah. So it'd just be the recycling part that's different.
That's what I got.
But we're not recommending that.
Yeah, we're not recommending.
Yeah, that's what I'll be for.
All I know is I fill that 64-gallon cart with recycling every single...
That's why you need a 96.
I do, I do. Or let's kill, let's kill them.
The other thing is...
One or the other.
He gets a lunch when he leaves.
It's a reasonable assumption that if you go to once a week over twice a week, you're going to see more people putting things that recycle bins. I don't know how much, but it's a reasonable assumption.
We have a very good recycling participation rate, more than I ever anticipated.
How long, how long have we been picking up twice a week?
Forever. Before 1976.
That's for us.
They started in 81.
All right, we got, we got a bid for 67. Anybody want to go 66?
On the service enhancements, we asked Waste Management to come up, we have a few, again, on yard waste, was our major issue of taking yard waste to a mulching facility for trying to save life of the landfill. And we have representatives from Living Earth, who contract with Waste Management, and we would have to work, negotiate out, give them mulch material back and those kind of things for the citizens if they want to obtain that, and we'll have to work that out with finalization of the contract. I've looked at brush, bulky waste, this is once a month. Currently, if you have brush, and we have a few that would like for, just to put a 60-foot tree out in the front yard, you know, that crawls over, and somebody come by and pick it up, but it has to be cut into manageable areas for it to be replaced in a residential real-load unit. However, this operation would allow for brush and bulky waste, largely mainly brush, to be cut in larger components or larger lengths, and then remove by Waste Management, being a grappling truck or what would have to come back and pick it up, kind of like we had in the storm event when we went around picking things up. That's what this would be, it's $2.05 per household per month. And so how many of those, you know, are out there that are in need for that particular service? The next enhancement is Recycle Bank, it's an incentive program to improve residential and recycling, and Joe, if I state this wrong, or Lisa, correct me, but basically what they do, they calculate the amount, the tonnage, that's collected on a recycling day or recycling month, some kind of term, and then those that participate in recycling get some kind of credit back for the amount of tons that they, that they participate in. And that comes in as points for, points on a gift card or free coupons or something to that nature, their estimate from Recycle Bank. It's a private industry working through Waste Management and I believe other companies where it's trying to incentivize recyclables, trying to make you recycle more and get something back for it. I believe Carrollton has used this in the past, and with various... I believe Carrollton has used this in the past, and with various issues of whether or not they like it or not. I mean, some, some people like it, some people don't like it. Some people use it for a while and then they drop off from it.
Carrollton's using it, we've seen about a five percent bump.
Bump, okay.
How long have they been using it?
Actually, they were using it, we started with them with twenty-ten, and they've been using it since then. They had a similar program with their previous holler, so they've been committed to it for quite a while.
How long have you been offering this kind of product across the country?
In a couple of different forums, it goes back about... About twenty, early February, twenty.
Do you see a bump in the nutrition, do you see consistent, how does that work?
If you do it right, in the city, and we have such a good education piece here that you guys have helped with, it's just like anything else, you have to kind of, when you see it, do this, and you dip, you put a little pushback out there. The neat thing about that program, though, is really education-based, particularly addressing younger folk. That's, that's how you build the excitement, not the adults. And you get them into the website, they, they pick up something, environmental education, the coupons come in, it doesn't take much, you know, and it works. They stress signing up local businesses, too. Yes, you try to push the people back into those little businesses. But it does, the nice thing about Recycle Bank is you do have a national, McDonald's and that sort of thing, so.
This is the only particular incentive that you add to the twelve fifty-seven, I mean, to the, the new number, the eleven forty-six, that you're still under your current rate. It's a rate decrease of about forty-five cents. So that is one issue there. The other one that was very interesting to us was the At Your Door Household Hazardous Waste Program. With currently, Carol and Lisa work a weekly, I mean, I'm sorry, a monthly, second Saturday of the month, Household Hazardous Waste Collection out of Jones Street. We have about fourteen hundred users per year. And so when we looked at the number of participants that we have, we'd be at dollar twenty. So you gotta look at adding that to the cost of the proposed service level, which would then be quota rate increase. Our current collections, again, our total programs are at a hundred and ten thousand, we lack fourteen hundred, I said, on participation. And our, our basic monthly cost for a single-family household is forty-seven cents. You can break it down based on twenty thousand population in the annual cost, so that is one thing. Household, At Your Door Household Hazardous Waste Program, basically you call in, you speak to an operator, that operator would then take your name, address, phone number, sends you a collection package, set up a scheduled date for your pickup, which is a couple of weeks out, I believe, from the date you get your package. And then you put all your material in the bag, set it at your door, set it in your garage, or someplace they can get to, and they will actually come to your door, instead of having to take it out and drag it out to the curb. And they send a collection unit to your house, load it up, and take it away.
Also includes e-waste and sharps.
Okay, so talk to me about that small appliances, because e-waste starts, where's the line drawn there?
Basically, what we're looking at as far as e-waste, computers, cell phones, television, technology type things. You pick up your small appliances and your, your pressure cord.
There, again, their, their costs unlimited, what we have to take, we had fourteen hundred last year, about that many the year before, would be in that dollar and ten range for that service.
Our city-based one is driven by volunteers.
And city staff.
And city staff.
Part of that hundred and ten thousand is, is...
How has, how has volunteer participation been over the last couple of years, has that been strong?
Louisville Morning Rotary has done it since nineteen ninety-nine, since we started. And they usually have seven to ten people there. We, we usually have eight staff members.
So when you're talking about the cost, that hundred thousand or hundred and ten a year, that's inclusive of staff time?
Comes out of, not, doesn't come from the residents.
No.
So, that's one of the differences here, is the proposal would put that as part of the fee structure, so the residents would pay for it. Here, it's basically not a pay for it, it's paid for out of other operations, rates. I'm talking about the revenue for it comes from the utility fund, through rates.
So if you free up that hundred and ten in the utility fund, you can use it for something else. Or could you use it to fund this?
I don't know what the annualized customer base cost is, we don't work that out with Waste Management. I don't know what their rates are times the number of, times the...
You know, the household hazardous waste, the dollar twenty?
Yeah.
Comes out to two hundred and eighty-eight thousand a year.
So it can be short.
It can be short.
You can limit the collections, you'll put a cap on the collection.
But if you, if I was, I mean, my position is, if you, if I'm now paying for it, and I go over five hundred, or whatever the next fee level Trump was, I'm gonna be at the dollar twenty. I have fourteen hundred people coming in currently a year, so I'm gonna be at that dollar twenty, I don't know. Unless you tell you're gonna give me a break on that, you know, other than about ten thousand will be fine. That would be one issue that we'd have to do more research. The, we've given you some basics on what, if you add the enhancements to the program, what those different cost barriers are. And the next one. Okay, proposed franchise changes on the commercial is, basically we're only get rid of the bags behind the commercial, the small commercial mom and pop shop, you go to the ninety-six gallon carts, same price as the bag pickup. There is a ten percent increase in all commercial rates. And one thing I have to bring up here is that we do not have a fuel surcharge component in our rate, we never have. And this ten percent increase in commercial rates effective with this new agreement would be to cover future fuel costs. And our fuel cost range is anywhere from three to five percent up to twenty percent. Personally, I think twenty percent, eighteen percent right now, not in Louisville, but on a fuel surcharge component. And so they can't hit you. Some of the areas, cities that have fuel surcharges are being tagged with that fuel surcharge. We, we calculated, and the ten percent increase, when they went into oh-four, the rack rate on fuel was about a dollar sixty, dollar seventy. And currently, it's about three oh-five, three ten. And that's without taxes and all the other stuff into it that they have to pay. But when we count those numbers, the ten percent for future costs did not look unreasonable. Franchise fee was maintained at seventeen four six on commercial, and they are offering, the industry standards have changed, they've got some new sized dumpsters and roll-offs and different things that will be in the matrix once you see that. On the commercial recycling, this is one thing you asked us to do, volunteer, we did a couple of voluntary issues. These are what they will recycle for commercial establishments, setting a rate, we did not have that in the old rate component. And so it goes from a ninety-six gallon cart for a mom and pop wanting to recycle, to some six and eight-yard front-load containers, and what their collection rates would be for those.
What was that, on the cart, how often that picked up?
Be once a month.
Per month, okay.
Once a week.
Once a month on the cart, dumpsters anywhere from once a month to once a week. There's eighty-four per, per month, and then a once a week is a hundred and forty. Is what they indicated to us. On the, the other item that you're...
Along with here, two things.
I think it's ninety-six gallon cart is gonna cost twenty dollars and ninety-five cents a month, but it's once a week.
It's picked up weekly.
Oh, is it once a week?
Whereas the cubic yard dumpsters are paid for monthly and collected monthly?
Once a week, twice.
Okay, got it. Now, then the reading thing kicks in.
And the rate for the multi-family, I mean, for the commercial recycling is about eighty-five percent trash, the trash...
The one item that you asked us to really research, and we're about out of time, is multi-family. Waste Management did come up with a proposal that's being used in several other cities. It's just now kicking off in other cities, but it's about a dollar per unit. It's eighty-five cents for the container that you pick up, the large eight-yard container. And then fifteen cents a month per unit for a recycling bin. This is the old eighteen-gallon bin that they put the recyclables in, that the homeowner would then go down, or they could have valet. I don't know if somebody's gonna do valet recycling, the apartment complex going up to each apartment, taking it down, bringing it back. That's all an expense, that would have to be dealt with, and I'm sure you'll see. A, if this is set up as mandatory, as an ordinance form, charges going back to the customer, of course. And how they'll inflate that, we'll try to watch and maintain it best we can.
So that would just be picked up as often as necessary?
The recycling container would probably be, I would say, probably once a week.
Depending on the demand, right?
And then on the smaller complexes, we have a few that, you know, might have eight units, ten units. They could go to a two-yard smaller container for the same. Claude, do you want to be drawn or...
Y'all wanna come back to this after we do the workshop, or do you wanna finish up?
Maybe get a workshop, probably.
All right. All right, Steve, thank you very much, we'll come back to that item. Okay, moving on to item B, discussion of regular agenda items and consent for agenda items. Item A, unless anybody feels strongly that they would rather do the implication, I will stand in for the mayor. Item B. Item C. Item D. Number one, A, B, and C. Were you able to make those?
Yeah, it was at, on the October seventh minutes, the, um, tablet at the very top didn't get fixed, and now mayor petitioned and...
Item two. Comments on item three. Okay, that brings us to the regular hearing. Item four. Item five. If I just feel satisfied? Item... Item six.
This is one that we need a little feedback from council on, with respect to landscaping options that we have on there. Eric, are you here? David, Terry, can walk you through those before you make a decision. And it's basically a question of how much irrigation, or how much landscaping you want, and what type of landscaping, and its possible impacts on irrigation. So we've got a zero-scaping type option there for you. It involves lesser levels of the typical types of planning materials, and more of the, what I would call survivable Texas native desert type stuff. So we thought it might be an option you would be interested in from the standpoint of both the sustainability approach, and maybe as a demonstration project. But it'll look different, definitely look different than City Hall or somewhere.
Okay, the plots down through here that are zero-scaped, going down towards the DCCA, there's one of the newer buildings that's all...
Oh, yeah, Pride Center's done.
Yeah.
I mean, there's one down on, I guess technically it's a zero-scape, the event center that's on MacArthur at Mr. Ridge Mall Drive. And it came in, ironically, used to be a...
Home Depot Garden Center.
Garden Center, yeah, and they basically took out all the grass, took out all of the basic plant materials that they had there, and replaced it with cactus, and pretty hardcore zero-scape, but...
Item seven.
Still, if they make the changes, we have to pay for the signs.
Yeah. Like chronic reader boards.
Item eight. That brings us to nine.
Is it possible for you upfront to, possibly just kind of go over this a little bit, a little brief history, and explain exactly what we're actually doing, and then where we're going from here, and how we're on the clock at this point?
Item ten. Number eleven. That is the end of the agenda for us, and do you wanna go back to the Waste Management?
Still can get that.
All right. Open up the discussion for the Waste Management proposal. Yeah, I think what we spoke a few moments ago, where we were at, go back. What the, we was talking about multi-family. Again, this was a couple of retreats that you've asked for, mandatory programs on multi-family. So again, we do have that option this year. It would be in an ordinance format, it would be in, placed in the franchise ordinance. It would be mandatory for all apartment complexes in anything above four units, in combination or attached.
How common is this, as a requirement versus an optional?
We're, we're seeing it in cities like Allen and Grapevine, we also have Addison taking a look at it. And so this area, I'm sort of at the only ones I know of.
Well, didn't, or have looked at it, there are several cities that are looking at it and starting.
Voluntary on apartments, we've tried, like Lisa, Carol, everybody out trying to get them to do it voluntary, and it just doesn't work, so you get the concerns from the residents wanting it, so. But the issue is, is the cost, and that's what shuts the apartment complex down.
So it's cost, it's cost to the, to the actual complex owner? The residents, there's a resident...
They're on charge, they're on bad...
Yeah, of course they are.
They can't, it didn't, it isn't just a given that they can raise their rents, it's still gonna be market rent.
Well, they're already under lease.
The ones that are, the ones that aren't, it's still gonna be market whenever it comes out.
Some of our apartments have seven hundred and fifty units, so...
So do we have any existing multi-family that's mandatory in the metroplex?
Allen and Grapevine.
Okay, and what's their recycling rate like? I'd be curious to see if, if the, if the demand on the other side is there. I mean, if it's all well and good, and we're making it mandatory, but then if nobody pitches in, it's not having a net impact on the landfill.
This is, talking about the rate of the...
Rate of recycling.
The, oh, volume that they're producing.
Yeah, volume that they're producing. I mean, the point of adding or requiring this is to reduce the flow into the landfill and extend the life. So, is it gonna do that? I'd be curious to see how the existing, what kind of flow they're getting.
Just your largest component of... Your largest influx into the landfill is yard waste.
Is what?
Yard waste.
Grass.
Wheat, yeah.
Grass, wheat, brush.
Grass, weed, brush.
Lambs.
I don't think it would actually affect the city much, but how, how would waste management in that situation, multifamily, control what's really going into those containers?
Well, the shape of the container itself, the loading of the container is not the common way with the big doors like you normally have in the business. But these are either slotted to encourage carports or the side, they likes to have holes to. It's just designed to encourage it and not be why it opens, let the garbage goes in there. And the big, the fifteen cents for the bin is for something that they can set outside their door, you know, and collect during the week or, uh, whatever they were doing that week, and then walk down and actually take it, throw it in the slots. We had several of those back in the early nineties when we first started recycling. We also had, waste management also had a truck that they sorted bottles and cans and everything at, at the street. We don't do that anymore. It's a co-leading process, it's taken to the earth and then separated, uh, basically by conveyor automation and mainly by hand. So, uh, again, the, we're looking at, uh, the new ordinance would be a ten-year agreement with five-year renewal, similar to what it is today, or until the landfill closes. Not fifteen, fifteen years. So if they happen to go sixteen or seventeen, this, we'd have to renew a franchise and work through that. Senior rate of eighty percent off the, uh, general rate, retaining the two free, unless they're requesting front door. Front door, yeah. Uh, let me explain that, good point. We have the, uh, senior rate. Seniors take it down to the curb just as anyone would. But however, if you have an individual that cannot make it to that point, is disabled, has some need, they, you know, need to have a collected quote at the door or at the garage door, waste management will do that, but it'll be at the standard rate. And there had to be certain provisions and a wa, uh, uh, not a waiver, but a acknowledgement of their difficulty in taking it down to the road, an affidavit sort of thing. Uh, free trash and recycling services to city facilities as it is today. Free containers, uh, generally these are roll-offs that Waste provides at the KOB program. Free cleanup, our trash and trash patch, and our Western Days festivals. And they're usually pretty good if we have something that comes up during the year, we're working on those. Revenue sharing on recycling, there is a, a rate based on floor rate. It floors up from cost of the commodity or the selling price of the commodity. We hit certain percentages, there's, there's different matrices and elevations of that. So our, what's our general intake today on recycling, eight, nine hundred dollars?
Oh, fifty thousand a year.
Fifty thousand a year is what we have on rebates. So increasing the recycling, getting the market back up, uh, you know, could be some added benefit to the recycling program. Proposed new community contributions, have this at Louisville landfill, fifty thousand dollars annually for the Louisville civic programs, civic events. And, uh, also free dumpsters for the Old Town Plaza, Main Street area between Charles and Mill, along Main Street, both sides. That, what that basically is putting there is two dumpsters, two community dumpsters, one on each side of the Punters Plaza, so to speak, on the north side. And then as we proceed in doing something on the south side, it will, they'll provide the free dumpster at that, uh, free dumpsters at both locations, if you will. Our recommendations, uh, is basically going with option one. And, uh, going with the ninety-six gallon carts for both trash and recycling, continuing the limited bulky waste collection. Again, when I say limited, that means what can fit in a standard pickup truck, tied and bundled, brush, and waste, or grass clippings and et cetera, and bags. Uh, this option also includes two bags outside of the trash cart, limit to two forty-gallon, uh, quart trash bags. Service enhancements, if you wish to go this way, there's once-a-week yard waste collection. Again, this advantage, uh, diverts the waste from landfills, prolongs landfill life. But we're not the only user of the landfill. Make, make you aware of that. I mean, we're, we're a component of the landfill, but they are a regional operation. The residents do occur, the additional cost. And possibly on the collection days, we're working with Waste, that, that's some of the fine tuning of the ordinance of how do we, if we go with once-a-week garbage, once-a-week recycling that we have, and, uh, do we have two days or do we have one day? We'll work those issues out, but it's most likely we'll be, we'll still have two days, one to pick the recycling up and one to pick the trash in. But we don't know that for certain. Total residential rate without enhancements, eleven forty-six. And fourteen oh-two with the enhancements which are with our recommended yard waste, which is a dollar and forty-five cents, I believe, uh, above the curb rate. And so if there's, if there's an issue that we, or an issue, if there's a, something that we can look at on commercial is including, if you wanna go mandatory apartment, and include the voluntary commercial recycling, which we really, we think that's just standard. It's really not a decision point we're looking at, we put that in there anyway. But I don't mean mandatory multifamily recycling, we need your direction on that as well. So what we're looking at is, uh, what's general consensus going once a week or twice a week? What our trash containers are, what our recycling containers would be, and any service enhancements that you'd like.
I was gonna say that maybe we just start with the once-a-week versus twice a week and see what kind of discussion or consensus we got there. Cause that's a critical component, obviously, in some of these other decision meetings.
Uh, there's no doubt you're gonna get some kickback on the once-a-week from the public, and I think, you know, in three months, you'll have heard most of it. So, um, it's certainly a lot of benefits to go into once. And it goes beyond the cost reduction because it's less road traffic, it's less pollution in a EPA count, you know, monitored county. I mean, it's just, there's side benefits to going to the once-a-week besides just not collecting twice.
You're not the only ones that would have been converting, or that, this has other cities that have gone before. And I hope you guys wanna comment on the experience you've had at other cities that went from twice a week to once a week in carts, and whether there was a.
Just like the councilman's saying, it's usually a couple of months and you're not hearing anything. I think once people realize, get used to it, they get the new cart, and they see the price go down somewhat. That takes a lot of it out of their, your experience.
In Louisville, you may recall, I remember when, uh, Buddy was the mayor, uh, one time y'all tried carts, you remember?
Yeah.
One of the most difficult things we ever tried to do in Louisville was to get the carts back to the office when you stopped the pilot program. So that really says.
There is more flack about that than anything else when you stop. It was a pilot program, basically.
But we ran it twice a week.
We did run it twice a week.
That was a problem.
And it was also in the multifamily, I believe, it wasn't in the ninety-sixes, was it?
That was in ninety-six. So nice and tidy, and everybody gets used to that, and you wash them out, whatever, so.
Now, you mentioned some negative feedback. Forty-six years that we know of, forty-seven years of doing it twice a week, going to once a week, might elevate that some to a lot more than some. And I agree. Granted, with time, people are just gonna get used to it, if implemented.
The other thing you.
But I think you, but I think you would need to prepare yourself for an onslaught.
Well, it also depends on what else you're doing in conjunction with that. For example, if you just take the once-a-week and don't add anything to it, you can always counter to some extent with, your rate is a dollar, whatever it was, less a month.
Your rate dropped ten percent.
Rate dropped ten percent. So, but that depends on whether you do any of the other, some of the other things.
And, and we can do, like I said, we can do things like we did in the original, uh, the existing contract, where these things like enhancements, we can work into ordinance to price those with today's pricing and escalate then and give you some period of time to adopt those in the future if you wanna move to something else as time goes on, as far as enhancements.
The staff's recommendation is basically, uh, here around the fact that many other cities have gone to this, and it seems to be the trend in this type of service delivery. And, yeah, there's a certain amount of change management that you'll have to be prepared to deal with to some extent. We'll, we'll probably deal with ninety-five percent of it, but you'll get five, and that five will be vocal. And you just have to be prepared to, uh, deal with it. And, uh, I think once you get over that hump, then everyone's pretty happy with the service and the service level being provided. So forty-six years, yeah, but it's probably something we should've done twenty years ago.
I'm still for the two times a week.
Anybody else?
But no cart? Self-containers?
Well, we have got, we started with this.
We're discussing the once-a-week or twice a week.
I'm good with once a week, assuming a couple of other things happen.
What do you do if, uh, if your collection day happens to fall on Christmas Day? And if once a week, that'd be three weeks between collections.
What would, what we would do there, if Christmas falls on your collection day, they'll pick up the next day on once a week.
Which is what they do now?
No.
They pick it up on the next regular scheduled day. And we'd have to change recycling the same way, which is currently, you skip a week. Joe and I talked about that.
There are no holidays on recycling now. There are no holidays for recycling.
I know, but if we changed the new program, I think what the issue would be is that Joe and I talked of actually going back and collecting on holidays. Going back to the way we used to do it, but recycling garbage picked up on a holiday. They just continue to do that with check of operations, and that may change.
One of the things you might be more likely to hear about is strictly guesswork perhaps, but if you happen to, if you're going to once a week, and you as the customer happen to mow your yard on the afternoon of your regular pickup, trash pickup, then it would be a week before those bags get picked up. So in the meantime, the bags will be sitting there in the alley. And I don't know if that's a significant enough issue to worry about it or not, but, uh, people tend to have.
I would say that that's gonna more likely happen on a weekend anyway.
Yeah. Probably. But you might have that one person or.
Those days.
Stuff sitting in my alley for a week. How come they didn't pick it up?
Will the days be the same, your trash pickup and recycle pickup? They're each once a week, so would they both?
That's the question for that history.
We've been talking about that, as to whether or not that would be the case, but.
That's what we do in our other cities, it's once a week and Sunday.
At least you don't have to worry about it being a different day of the week.
Right. What do you have, Steven? Yes, for the one or two?
Okay.
You, that's what we're talking, your opinion is?
I already said mine, I'm for one.
One?
You'll hear, you'll hear about it for a couple of months and then.
One?
Kind of hurt.
Two?
Two.
Always the progressive thinker, let's, city manager team says we should've done it two years ago, twenty years ago.
Twenty years ago.
Uh, yeah, with the ninety-six.
One time we did, we burned the trash.
Fifty-five gallon grubs for everybody.
Bottle of gasoline.
Yeah, um, once a week, but with a ninety-six gallon cart.
What we have now is sixty-four gallon.
Recycle.
That's the recycling.
Yeah, but it's big.
So carts. Cart?
I'm for ninety-six, ninety-six.
Yeah, ninety-six. Ninety-six already.
Which is number one, right?
Still number one, yeah.
I'll, I'll. Number three.
I like getting away from the, uh, private container because, I mean, I see them, the containers blowing around and the lids are blowing around, not to mention the trash blowing around.
I tried to throw away one of my private containers, it took a month. They, they, they would not take it, it just kept coming back out.
Actually, one of the more frequent complaints that we get is the private containers, and when they blow, they get emptied out. The tenants dutifully put them back where they belong, but then the thirty-five mile an hour wind comes along and sends them down the alley, a block down. And while these probably aren't immune to wind, they're probably less likely to move because they are a little bit heavier, pretty certain.
So if I understand, the consensus is the ninety-six for both?
Yes.
Except for me.
Semi-consensus.
Okay, semi. Very glad, glad.
Do you need anything else, Steve?
Yeah, we're having, we got a couple of seconds left.
Okay.
We've got, if we're doing once-a-week trash, once-a-week recycling, and the ninety-six gallon containers provided by Waste Management, you're at a rate of eleven forty-six.
Right.
Which is a little bit more than a dollar, dollar eleven.
Dollar eleven difference.
Are there any of the enhancements that you're interested in? Do you wanna take the savings and run?
So I'm gonna jump in there first. I want, I really wanna like the, uh, the, uh, yard waste collection, but here's, actually, I have a question for you, if we have time. So top three, uh, Joe, or whoever, top three cities intake on a daily intake basis, who are they and are they doing this? For D O T.
Yeah, two cities that I work with that are doing this are Capel and Highland Village.
That they're not your top three?
No, the biggest one is Fort Worth.
Yeah, Fort Worth would be the biggest.
From Minnesota, right.
And Fort Worth's not doing it, right?
Yes, they are doing it.
Oh, they are doing it.
Yes, they're very large diversion rate.
Okay.
And with this, part of this program is bringing compost back to the cities, for your citizens with the city.
And Grapevine is the pilot program right now on the brush diversion, the yard waste collection diversion.
I might as well bring this up to you on yard, if you do this enhancement. It must be in a craft bag, cannot be in a black garbage bag, is that correct?
Correct, and, and it is all for y'all to decide if you wanna, you know, and probably not let them provide their own container because we just had that Liz running around discussion. Um, but yes, a, a craft bag or, um, they're the compostable, uh, plastic polymer bags.
Get a pass on those?
Last time I priced my Home Depot, they were like, three or four for?
Eight dollars.
Yeah.
About eight bucks for it.
And this enhancement is two dollars and six cents, am I?
Fifty-six, fifty-six.
But it's, it's levied on every household. And so, for example, on my block, every single person mulches.
I was, I'm sorry to jump in, but it, you know, to go down that road with the yard waste collection, I'd also look at your bulky brush diversion and make sure to urge that, um, yeah.
I realize.
Materials get diverted, um, or it's a separate pickup if it's too bulky for it to fit into your motor.
Couldn't you be part of the bulky brush pickup in, in most cases?
Well, the difference is, in the bulky brush pickup, it goes to landfill, whereas this, it would be mulched and reviewed.
What usually, yeah, what usually happens with the bulk, or the brush, the large collection, is that those materials are, have to use a grapple truck. And so with the curb site collection, I mean, typically looking at the smaller yard waste debris, weeds, grass, um, small brush trimmings from shrubs, et cetera, that can go into either the compost and mulch feedstock. With the craft bag collection, if it is collecting craft bags, all those materials coming in will actually be mulched and not composted, uh, just because it's a little more difficult to process those paper bags. They don't, they don't break down as quickly as, um, compost.
I'm sorry to cut you off, but we need to get our regular meeting started. Uh, it is now seven o'clock. It's five after seven, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you would stand and join me in a moment of silence for the invocation, and Councilman Tierney will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. A moment of silence, please.
Or comma rather, no comma.
All together.
This time, we will have the visitor citizens forum, any of the council not scheduled on the agenda, may speak to the council, while action can be taken on these items at this time. All right, we have no one that's wishing to speak, and so we'll move on to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be self-explanatory by the council, and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. For a citizen to request removal of an item, a speaker card must be filled out and submitted to the city secretary.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, and a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Oh, okay. Thank you. All right, that brings us to our regular hearing, and we have some cards filled out by Stephen, it looks like Ritty, I hope I'm not mispronouncing that name, but anyway, he wished, they wished to speak on item four, which is consideration of a final plat of one twenty-one slash five forty-four addition, lot one, block A, a one point eight-eight acre parcel zone local commercial, located on the southwest corner of State Highway one twenty-one business and FM five forty-four, with two associated variances, as requested by the Dimension Group Incorporated, representing the property owner. The subject property is located in Castle Hills and being platted for the purpose of constructing a racetrack gas station and convenience store. Access to the lot will be provided from northbound State Highway one twenty-one business and from FM five forty-four through lot two, block A, via a private access easement. The following variances are being requested by the owner, A, to allow a dedication of a street easement in lieu of right-of-way dedication for the, for a decelerization lane along FM five forty-four, and B, to allow a reduced median opening spacing on FM five forty-four between State Highway one twenty-one business and Midway Road. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the final plat and variances six zero at its October first meeting. Similar variances have been approved in this area. It's a recommendation that the city council approve the plat and the variances as set forth in the caption above. So Ms. Stephen Riddick, if you would like to step forward, give us your address, and you have five minutes to make your...
Stephen Riddle with Racetrack Patrol M three two 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 five Cumberland Boulevard, Suite one hundred, Atlanta, Georgia, three oh three three nine. I don't have anything to add other than the staff report. We think this is a great project for the community, and we're looking forward to being part of it. Thank you. And we have a great team here, civil engineers, traffic consultants, as well as the landowner to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We also have another card filled out that would like to speak on this item, Eric Stanley.
Stanley, if you have questions?
Thanks.
I do have a question, and maybe I missed it somewhere, but I know we've done this before, but why the easement instead of the dedication? What is the underlying reason?
Mr. Stanley, would you step up to the mic and give us your address, please?
Eight hundred Sir Galahad Lane, Lewisville, Texas. The reason for using the right-of-way area, we've done that in places where the road is as wide as it's going to be, and there's excess right-of-way, diminishing driveways and et cetera that have to be done in order to get from the roadway into the property.
Okay, thank you.
David, did you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, this is a variance we've used in other locations in Castle Hills. It basically, when you dedicate an easement as opposed to a right-of-way, it doesn't affect the building line on the lot like it would if you dedicated right-of-way, and it will allow them to have their parking somewhat closer to the road than they would otherwise.
Comes more to a setback issue then?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, I get it.
Lot usability.
Okay, no problem, thanks.
At this time?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, and a second by Councilman Gilmore. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item five, consideration of a preliminary plat of Castle Hills Track F, a ninety-seven point eight acre parcel designated a state townhouse and general business two, with three hundred and seventy-nine residential lots, twenty-five common area lots, and one commercial lot, located on Sam Rayburn Tollway and Winhaven Parkway east of Josie Lane, with three associated variances, as requested by Land Design Incorporated, representing the property owner. The residential lots and homes will conform to the requirements for a detached product in a state townhome zoning. The applicant has applied for the following variance requests, A, to allow a forty-one foot street right-of-way with adjacent six-foot sidewalk and utility easement in lieu of the fifty-foot street right-of-way with adjacent seven point five utility easement, B, to waive the alley requirements, and C, to allow a street drainage, utility, and pedestrian easement in lieu of the right-of-way for decelerization lanes along Sam Rayburn Tollway. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the preliminary plat and variance six zero at its October first meeting. It is a recommendation that the city council approve the plat and the variances as set forth in the caption above. And we have a couple of cards filled out, neither one choosing to speak, Eric Stanley or Brian Ditch, but they are here for any questions the council may have. I will entertain a motion on this item.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Councilman Ferguson, and a second by Councilman Durham. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item six, consideration of a variance to the Lewisville City Code, Section six dash one two three, multifamily and non-residential landscaping requirements for the proposed Walter Street parking lot, located at lot one, block A of the Louisville City, one addition, as requested by the city of Lewisville, the owner, and provide staff direction with regard to landscape options. The subject site is a zero point eight six seven acre lot, zone public use, located at the northwest corner of Mill Street and Walter Street. The city of Lewisville plans to construct a new parking lot, providing ninety parking spaces. In lieu of providing the required ten-foot landscape strip, the city is proposing to install a six-point-five foot wide landscape strip along Walter Street. Staff is proposing three options for the landscape improvements for the proposed parking lot. The recommendation is that the city council approve the variances as set forth in the caption above, and give staff direction with regard to which option, A, B, or C, or alternative landscape options to proceed with. And we have a card filled out, if there's any questions, by Mr. John St. Clair. Council have any questions?
Did the staff have a presentation on this?
We did not, but certainly we can go over it. David can walk you through the basics of the differences between the options.
I mean, if anybody else, I've read the backup material, I didn't know if anybody else had an interest in it.
I would, I would...
David, why don't you come up and just kind of describe the variations between A, B, and C?
I think the variance is self-explanatory, it just comes down to math, you know, if we have to put more than six and a half feet of landscape along Walter Street, we ultimately lose a row of parking, so that's the reason behind our recommendation on that. With regard to the three landscape options, the first option would be a typical landscape scenario like we see around town, or even in our parking lots here at City Hall, with Bermuda grass, holly bushes, and oak trees, and things of that nature. And of course, those types of plantings require standard landscape irrigation, like we have here at City Hall, that, you know, in the summertime typically runs, you know, at least once a day. So the other two options are, have, are similar in terms of the amount of area that would be landscaped, the difference is the type of plantings that would be applied. In option B, we're calling it a zero-scape option, instead of grass, Bermuda grass, what's being proposed are two different colors of decomposed granite with a border in between them. There would be some different types of plants, you've got pictures of those in your backup, desert willow, yuccas, pampas grass, things of that nature. And, you know, anybody who travels the Sam Rayburn Tollway has probably noticed any of these types of plants planted along that road, and you can kind of see what they look like there if you've done that. There would be some irrigation required for these types of plants. Typically, irrigation would have to be in place to get the plants started, but then once the plants were established, the only permanent irrigation would be bubblers near the actual larger trees. Then the last option, option C, is very similar to option B, the only difference is, instead of putting landscaping on the internal islands, they would simply be painted. So there are same thing, there would be some irrigation involved, but of course, less of it because we wouldn't be irrigating those internal islands and those trees that were being proposed. I can go into it in more detail if anybody would like, or if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer those.
I looked over these three options, and the option that appealed to me was option C plus, which is that as we move from option B to option C, we lose all landscaping in the islands. There were, in option B, still some trees in the islands, option C is zero. I wondered why, I like the, obviously I like the zero-scape options along the perimeter, but I wondered why there was not an option to have some zero-scape landscaping done in the islands as opposed to the drastic shift from trees to nada.
Well, and that's an option as well, you know, we just felt that we wanted to provide a variety of options, and of course, we understand that there's probably, there are options in between what we've proposed that would also work. You know, the more plantings, the more irrigation is just sort of a, you know, how do you want the parking lot to look, and how much irrigation do you want applied? And we're just trying to get some direction from the council as to how far down this road we want to go with this location, or whether we want to consider it at all.
I mean, I'm sort of on the record as being very concerned about use of water. But at the same time, I'm looking, as we go to option B, and you go to the pampas grass and Texas sage and so forth, you're using burblers, you're using low water, you know, stuff that'll require some water to be established and then low water requirements otherwise. And I guess, like I say, I sort of like option C-plus, which is option C, but with some of the same material in the island areas. That would be my personal preference to make the parking lot a little less sterile-looking, but still make use of native plants, low wa, you know, drought-tolerant plants, low water requirements, but not just absolutely barren. So that's my thoughts.
The one thing I would mention is that even in option B, the internal islands, rather than being a normal tree like an oak or a cedar elm, are wax myrtles. So it's almost more of a shrub than just a tree anyway. But, you know, any of these plants that are on this plant list could be put in those islands. If it weren't wax myrtles, it could be Texas sage or it could be some of the smaller stuff like the yucca or the pampas grass.
All right, thank you very much. I'll open it up to the council as to an option that they prefer, they find interesting.
TJ, you want to go?
Sure.
I'm doing that as they're looking for some kind of direction here.
Having grown up in Arizona, most of the parking lots out there look like C. And I kind of like the aesthetic that B brings to the table. My only concern would be with pampas grass and whatnot is the tree provides a little bit of shade within the internal structure, whereas the sightlines start getting blocked if you start putting in pampas grass and those types of things. So I might look at that from a sightline perspective and safety within the four walls of that parking area. Other than that, really appreciate the experiment. I think it'd be a great example of where we might go as a city. And residents can kind of get a look for ideas to lower their water bill and whatnot. So I really appreciate the city staff bringing us some options like that.
Councilman Tierney?
I'm okay with option B out of these three options, but I definitely believe that if we do move in this direction that we need to look to change our current ordinance, which would allow any other user to use this same model, which would be for the non-residential, multifamily and non-residential. So if we do move forward then on this tonight, I think that we as council need to look to change that ordinance overall citywide.
I'd have to take a look, Councilman Tierney, at the ordinance requirements. My guess is, off the top of my head, that it currently allows most of what you'd see in option B for your general development standards. They're required to put trees and islands of specific types. And I think they have a lot of options that allow them to plant things like pampas grass and yuccas instead of a burford holly.
So the only reason that this is coming before us tonight is going from the ten-foot buffer to the six-and-a-half-foot buffer and other than that, just getting our personal preferences on what type.
Yeah, the actual only variance is the six-and-a-half-foot buffer zone. The rest of it is just a preference on what you want in terms of your own plant materials on a city-owned lot.
Having said that, I think option B is good. And this just takes me back to when it was brought up to us with the MCL Grand Theater, when it brought to the council as far as what we liked personally, as far as colors and textures and shapes and sizes for interior decorating. I thought that was kind of funny. Option B.
Yeah.
Councilman Durham?
I'll make a motion. The recommend approval of the six-and-a-half-foot landscape strip. Is that what's appropriate here?
Correct.
And that we move forward with option B.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Durham and a second by, I'm not sure.
Councilman Tierney?
TJ Gilmore?
Councilman Tierney.
I'm sorry, Councilman Tierney. Any further discussion?
I just want to verify, so in choosing option B, we are telling staff that we want trees?
Correct.
The trees identified in option B were things like cedar elms, wax myrtles, and desert willows. So they're not big oak trees like you'd see over here at City Hall or even the, what's the one with the knobby knees? What do we call those? Cypress, yeah, or not anything like that. These are the more desert-y looking trees.
In that case, could I ask you to bifurcate your motion?
Well, if I want to put in there that no matter what it is, it cannot have anything with a cedar in it. That's me personally.
Cedar elm is the poor man's live oak.
I want to be able to breathe, but I'll accept any amendment that you have on that.
Split it into two motions.
The six-and-a-half?
Yeah, split that out since that's the actual variance.
Okay. Second?
I'll second the six-and-a-half instead of ten.
Okay, yes. That would be the, to move that we change to six-and-a-half-foot landscape strip.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And then the second motion was to go with option B.
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Four-one. That brings us to item seven. Consideration of an ordinance amending the Lewisville City Code, Section fifteen thirty-six, maximum speed limits near schools, making general organizational changes and amending the times of operation for the school's speed zones on Summit Avenue, Lenmar Drive, Garden Ridge Boulevard, and Bel Air Boulevard. The Lewisville Independent School District and the Lewisville Police Department have requested some adjustment to the times of operation for certain school zones within the city of Lewisville. The LISD has requested that school zones on Summit Avenue and Lenmar Drive begin thirty minutes earlier for Killaw?
High School?
The police department has requested that the times of operation for the school zones for Vicar, Vicory Elementary on Garden Ridge Boulevard and Bel Air Boulevard begin and end fifteen minutes earlier. These changes will enhance the safety of the students that attend those schools. Staff has reviewed these requests and recommend these changes be approved. It is recommended that the city council approve the ordinance as set forth in the caption above. I will entertain a motion.
I've got a question first.
Yes, sir.
On the Vicory Elementary, does that also include Flower Mound in that? Have they already agreed to this?
They're the ones that actually requested it. You only mean the town of Flower Mound?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought you meant the school district.
No.
I believe we control that intersection.
Isn't the school in Flower Mound?
School's in Flower Mound, yeah.
The school's in Flower Mound.
But the intersection itself, is that one that the city of Lewisville controls?
The actual intersection itself is in Flower Mound, although we have the street north of the intersection and east of the intersection.
Just the approaches, okay.
What I was getting is, is Flower Mound going to agree to change their signs too?
Excuse me, there's an email from the police department that says that Flower Mound actually changed it a while ago and that time zones don't match up, the school zone. So that's why they requested that we change ours. RPD requested that.
I'm following up on that. Is this going to be different than any other elementary school in Lewisville?
In terms of the timeframes? I believe so.
Why would we be different on this one than we would any others?
David, go ahead.
This particular school is physically in Flower Mound. And they've changed their school zones inside the city or inside the town limits of Flower Mound. And just so that our school zone, which is basically an extension of the school zone that's in Flower Mound, has the same time, we wanted to change it to be consistent. And that's the only reason that makes this school any different than anything else is that it already has a different time because it's inside the town limits of Flower Mound.
The question that Councilman Durham has is why a school there might, an elementary school there might have one timeframe and one over on the southwest side of Lewisville might have another.
Right.
And I don't think we can answer that. I think it depends on the school and the school's operations. Kind of like the middle school. The middle school is changing because they happen to have a program that involves meals, I believe, and that program may not exist at another school.
So did Flower Mound reduce the amount of time or did they expand the amount of time?
No, they simply shifted it by fifteen minutes. It's the same amount of time, it just shifted by fifteen minutes.
I'm going to be opposed to that part. If we're going to be switching them, I know this is an unusual situation. I'm this far away right now.
Okay, that's better.
Right there. But... Thank you. But I could see the next thing coming up. Well, Central Elementary needs to be at this time and Hedrick needs to be here.
Oh, we're already there.
And DeGant.
We've been there for a long time. Oh, yeah. Well, I can't say they're all different, but basically we respond to whatever the school district says they need.
Assuming they start at the same time, we don't have the same...
If they started at the same time, I'm guessing that they're going to be the same.
That's what I'm getting.
There's variation allowed.
Is Vicory started at a different time?
Look at all the different time zones.
Right. Because otherwise, I don't know, you're making, we're making it confusing for the public to know what the school's on.
There is no uniformity on school zones.
That's obviously a big problem.
It hasn't been for a long time.
Okay.
Yeah, excuse me, and answer the question. No, within the district, all of the elementary schools have the same operational hours. How this came about to be an issue is that at one point the district changed their scheduling for their different types of schools, the elementary versus the middle school versus the high school. And at that time, we did make adjustments to our school zones and times of operation then for the, for the middle school, for the high schools. But because the operational hours of the elementary schools was within the range of time, within the operational time of the existing school zones, we left them the same. The town of Flower Mound actually changed theirs, adjusted it slightly. That does the fifteen-minute difference. They changed all of theirs within their city. And so we have at this location basically a difference, disparity in the actual operational times of the two school zones or the, you know, within Town of Flower Mound and within the city of Lewisville. It's only at this location, though. It's because of that separation between the city boundary, as it may be, at this location that this arises. And it has been in place and this has been a point of contention for a while. Comments have been made. Pardon?
How long's it been since they've changed it?
I want to say it was about a year or so.
So is Flower Mound uniform across Flower Mound and Lewisville uniform across Lewisville when it comes to, let's say specifically, elementary schools? But the two cities are not uniform with each other? Is that an accurate statement?
Generally, yes. We, within our own ordinance structure previously, had some variations in locations that we had to adjust for anyway. One of the examples, I guess, would be the middle school out on Five Forty-four. The speed limit is, of the school zone is thirty-five versus all the others being twenty. So we had to actually create a specific and special subsection for that, for that school zone. We do have some other examples. We've got about three or four different subsections that address situations like that where there is a special need at a certain or, you know, either a single or a few special locations that we have to address. And so we created those subsections within the ordinance to do so.
But wasn't that created because the state controls Five Forty-four?
That, yes.
And they wouldn't let you put a twenty-mile hour on there?
That is correct. Tech Stop would not allow a twenty mile per hour addressing. So we are, we have already taken some consideration and made some adjustments to our general system in order to, to address specific issues that have come up.
Counsel, I think you have two options, maybe three. You can pass the ordinance here. Or I guess you could go back to Flower Mound and ask them to change it to ours, which is my understanding, it would work. Our speed limit at Vicory would work. It's okay. It just doesn't happen to match.
It would still cover the zone of operation, the time of operation would cover the arrival and departure times of Vicory. The difference being, of course, that the bulk of the school zone is within the Town of Flower Mound. They have the intersection of Bel Air at Garden Ridge and everything south of that. So they actually have, I believe that's actually two separate school zones, the one that covers the intersection of Bel Air and Garden Ridge. And then they also have another that covers the intersection of Garden Ridge at St. Gallin.
And your third option, of course, would be to do nothing. And then you have a fairly awkward situation where people driving on one side of the street are in a school zone and on the other side of the street, they're not.
Can I ask you one other question you may not have the answer to? But what compelled the town of Flower Mound to believe that shifting all of their elementary schools fifteen minutes earlier was a safety benefit that somehow the city of Lewisville does not perceive?
That, I really can't speak for the town of Flower Mound as to why they felt compelled to do that. We as, you know, the city of Lewisville, of course, felt that it is adequate to lead this, the times of operation where they were since that school. Typically, what we target is about forty-five minutes or thirty or forty-five minutes before the school starts to about fifteen minutes after the school starts. And then, of course, departure time is just reversed about fifteen minutes before they release and then about thirty, forty-five minutes after. And as long as we're within that range, we feel we are covering the necessary safety requirements for having a school zone there. With the purpose of the school zone, of course, is to protect the students, pedestrians, students that are walking to and from the campus. A variation of fifteen minutes either way, as long as it still falls within that range, to me, suffices.
But they actually changed theirs, right?
They did indeed, yes.
Okay, so they thought there was some argument for doing that? We assume. It wasn't just capricious.
I can't speak for them. One of the considerations was the need for, within the city of Lewisville, the need to change all of the existing signs if we were to do that. I don't, I can't answer how many school zones that Flower Mound has within their municipality, but I know it would be a large number here within the city of Lewisville.
Well, the odd thing to me is the town of Flower Mound made the decision to change theirs with no regard whatsoever for what we were doing across the street. Why wouldn't they, when they made that decision, try to work hand-in-hand with us?
Coordinate with us at that time or discuss it, do something?
It's odd.
It does strike me as odd. Could I ask Chief Kerbo, do you have any comment on this?
Thank you, Councilman. We supported this change because if you looked at intersection, the approach just north of the intersection, which is in Lewisville, southbound and northbound on Garden Ridge would be, would not be twenty miles per hour, fifteen minutes, you know, into the start time that Flower Mound starts it. Motorists typically don't understand, you know, jurisdictional changes. They're going by that zone. And so we would like for it to be, for both times to be aligned correctly. Whether they change to us or we change to them is pretty immaterial to us. We don't care.
Being confusing for the crossing guards too, to understand what the school zone hours are?
Correct.
Okay.
I think generally, cities tend to look at these things on a uniform basis and they don't take into account... they don't take into account sometimes little idiosyncrasies that might exist at a given location. This is possibly one of those locations where you have a border area that is in two jurisdictions and just doesn't come up that often. I know when we've changed school zone times, we haven't actually sat down and figured out how they affect the colony or Flower Mound or any of our border cities, so.
You very much.
First couple?
Appreciate it.
Go ahead.
Thank you both.
All right. I will entertain a motion at this time.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion by Councilman Gilmore and a second by Councilman Ferguson.
The city, I'm sorry, the city attorney?
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, amending the Lewisville City Code, Chapter fifteen, Traffic and Vehicles, Section fifteen dash thirty-six, Maximum Speed Limits Near Schools, by making general organizational changes, changing times for school zones on Bel Air Boulevard, Garden Ridge Boulevard, Lenmar Drive, and Summit Drive, and deleting Sections fifteen dash thirty-six point one through fifteen dash thirty-six point three, providing for severability, providing a penalty, providing a repealer, providing an effective date, and declaring an emergency.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Item eight. This is the second and final reading. Consideration of an ordinance extending the term of an ordinance granting a gas franchise to CoServe Gas Limited. CoServe Gas franchise with the city of Lewisville expired on March second, 2013. It has been the city's practice to extend the term of the prior franchise until a new franchise is prepared and executed. Staff is requesting an extension of the current franchise ordinance until February twenty-eighth, 2014. The proposed ordinance provides for the continuation of the terms and conditions of ordinance number three zero eight seven dash zero seven dash two zero zero four, pending the execution of a new franchise. The city of Lewisville Charter requires two readings of this ordinance with thirty days in between. The city council approved the first reading of the ordinance on September ninth, 2013, by a vote of three to zero.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Lewisville, Texas, extending the term of an ordinance granting a gas franchise to CoServe Gas Limited and providing an effective date.
Item nine. Consideration of acceptance of the Lewisville Lake Development Business Plan, prepared by Wynn Jackson Incorporated. In accordance with the Professional Services Agreement, Section three point zero one, approved on November first, 2010. The city executed an agreement with Wynn Jackson Incorporated for a feasibility study for development of the city's leasehold property on Lewisville Lake. The purpose of the study was to identify opportunities and constraints of existing conditions, working with stakeholders, and providing an implementation plan for development on the site. Their agreement called for a business plan that the city can take forward in implementing the plan. Wynn Jackson Incorporated has completed all components of the business plan as outlined in the agreement, and the city's acceptance of the plan is requested at this time. That has been the recommendation that the city council accept the business plan as outlined in the Professional Services Agreement with Wynn Jackson Incorporated, approved on April first, 2010. I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson and a second by Councilman Gilmore.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I was going to ask the city manager if he can kind of take us through exactly what we're doing tonight by accepting this project, maybe going back and giving a little bit of history as to how we got here. And by accepting it tonight, where exactly are we going from here?
Yes, sir. Is the city manager, Claude?
Counsel, the plan you have before you is the culmination of a couple of years of effort by Wynn Jackson. It goes back, I believe, the February twenty-eleven retreat, I believe, is when we selected Wynn Jackson as a consultant to look at putting together something that made sense for the, the lake. They, over time, consolidated their effort to the Eagle Point area as opposed to other locations under control of the city's lease, specifically the south area. And since that point in time, they have been working with their consultant team and with the operators out there to kind of, to try to come up with a plan that looked developable for a hotel and conference center or convention center and to keep operations of the existing businesses in some fashion as they go on if the site develops. So the business plan itself is really, as the comments indicated, a guide. It's a plan. It's not written in concrete. This is not anything that's going to necessarily have to be developed exactly as is. What you've attempted to do here is do some of the heavy lifting prior to a developer getting involved. That was the purpose of going through this process to begin with. Part of that heavy lifting involves taking a plan of some kind to the core of engineers, which controls that property, and getting them to sign off, at least on the broad components of the plan. And we are at that point right now. Wynn Jackson's about to submit that plan to the core of engineers. The process for them approving it will take some time, but, and again, it may not be in exactly the same form as you see it here today, but eventually, there will be something approved. But we have to have a plan to take to the core. And so that was, again, one of the primary purposes of engaging Wynn Jackson and their team. There are a lot of assumptions in the plan. Those assumptions, especially on the financial side, are subject to all kinds of financial realities and further refinement and negotiations between the various parties involved, which may be the city, may be the operators out there, it may be Wynn Jackson or some other developer. And so, again, they're done for the purposes of illustration and projection and to serve as a basis for those negotiations and should not be interpreted as anything that's fixed in concrete or should never change. They may go up, they may go down. Things may be taken out, things may be put in. The other thing this agreement does today, or this acceptance does today, is it sets the timeframe under the contract with Wynn Jackson for their option period. Once we accept the business plan, the Wynn Jackson firm has a hundred and eighty days during which they can come to you and exercise an option to submit a proposal to be the master developer. Presumably, that proposal would involve whatever financial terms they felt like needed to be dealt with to make the proposal work. And that's, again, up to them. They don't have to do that. They can opt not to do that, in which case, after a hundred and eighty days, you're free to use the material and the work product as you see fit. If they do submit a proposal, you don't have to submit it or you don't have to approve it. You can reject it. And again, you'll retain ownership of all of the materials. If you do not accept a proposal or if there is no proposal submitted, then basically, it's going to be council's option to decide what to do at that point. There's a couple of things that have been talked about, including going out on a formal RFP for multiple proposals. You might also just consider dealing with the leaseholders out there to see if they can come up with something themselves. You've got some decision points to make at that point in time, but that's still up to a hundred and eighty days away. So really, it's kind of coming down to the point where the operators and Wynn Jackson need to come together or not, and then we'll know in short order what's going to happen with respect to that. And that will guide you in making decisions further on down the line.
Your question, Greg?
Yes, that was a good background.
So I will request a motion at this time?
Move to approve.
You already had one?
Oh, there was already a motion? I'm sorry. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carries unanimously. Item ten. Consideration of reappointing Alvin Turner to place four on the Planning and Zoning Committee. In accordance with the city council's attendance policy, Alvin Turner has missed three consecutive meetings on the P and Z and is automatically removed. Upon discussion with Mr. Turner, staff has determined that this was due to several meeting cancellations and other commitments. Had the meetings not been canceled due to no items requiring discussion, Mr. Turner would not have missed three consecutive meetings. Mr. Turner has had an excellent attendance record prior to this incident. Staff recommends that Mr. Turner be reappointed to the P and Z. It is a recommendation that the city council reappoint Alvin Turner to place four on the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will entertain a motion.
Move to reappoint Alvin Turner?
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Item eleven. Consideration of acceptance of resignation of Charles Lovett from alternate place one and Angela Bennett Ingle.
That's a typo. It's Bennett.
It's a typo. It's Bennett.
Bennett Ingle.
Bennett Ingle. Angela Bennett Ingle from alternate place two on the zoning board of adjustment.
Declare vacancies exist.
On the zoning board of adjustment and consideration of an appointment to alternate place one and alternate place two on the zoning board of adjustment. I've been advised by the city secretary that, that we do not have any applicants as replacements at this time. The administrative, both Charles Lovett and Angela Bennett have submitted their resignations from alternate place one and alternate place two of the zoning board of adjustments due to conflicts in their personal schedules. The city council will, will need to consider some future point, appointments to fill these vacancies. It is a recommendation that the city council accept the resignation, declare vacancies as in the caption above. Entertain a motion?
A motion to declare vacancy.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilman Ferguson, second by Councilman Gilmore.
We need a motion to accept the resignation first.
Oh, sorry. Motion to accept the resignation and declare vacancy.
Oh, well, now that one I can't, no, second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose?
Motion carries. That brings us to reports. And I can't see, oh, Nika.
Anything to report?
This Saturday at the Toyota of Lewisville Railroad Park, we've got a great event for the community. It's our Spooktacular Trails Halloween event. It's a super event for the family. It's going to have a lot of new additions to it this year. It's being moved out to the trails around the soccer complex. It has an expanded haunted hayride. There is no admission charge this year. And in addition to that, that's from five to eight. Then at eight fifteen, we have a monster mile. There is a small charge for that. Then at eight thirty, for the Brave of Heart, we have a glow run, a five K glow run, that goes through the haunted woods out at the north end of the park. So it's going to be a great event and we invite everybody to come on out.
Like your, your Parks and Rec office, then it'll be a lot of fun.
Anything from the fire department? Ms. Galler?
Chief? Yes, sir. Just want to remind everybody about our medication disposal event that's taking place this Saturday. So you can do that before you run out to the railroad park to be spooked that day, I guess. We typically team up with LISD and the DEA to put on this event each year. So Saturday from ten AM to two PM, please bring your prescription medications there to be dropped off and disposed of. You know, our, our aim is twofold, to number one, have a safe place for us to pass on these prescription drugs that could be abused later, and also to raise awareness about this public safety, public safety health risk. Thank you.
Location?
That might be helpful. Be the Lewisville High School, ten ninety-eight West Main Street will be in the parking lot. Thank you.
Can I see anything to report?
No, sir.
Donna?
Nothing, sir.
Nothing?
No.
Keith?
No, sir.
Councilman Durham?
Yes, Councilman Vaughn. The, I got, I was at the parade last Friday, or Thursday, excuse me. It was very well attended and all I heard were compliments about the city staff, the organization, the, the barricades was probably the biggest point. And I didn't hear anybody that was opposed to them being up. They liked having a place there, particularly the ones with the little kids, could put the small ones right up on the fence and didn't have to worry about them going out or getting trampled or anything else from the bigger kids that were trying to get candy. So I want to thank the staff for all the work that was done. And it was a good time. Well, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Tierney?
Nothing, sir.
Councilman Gilmore?
I'd like to remind everybody that early voting has begun, the twenty-first through the twenty-sixth, eight AM to five PM. The twenty-eighth to the thirtieth, eight to five. And Thursday through Friday, the thirty-first and first, seven to seven, at the Lewisville Municipal Annex. That's there on Main Street. You've got nine Texas constitutional amendments that need to be voted on, yes or no. Lewisville ISD Board of Trustees has a replacement for place three, three candidates there. And of course, the local option liquor election is on that ballot as well.
Thank you, sir. City manager?
Yes, sir, thanks.
Councilman Ferguson?
Well, I'll start by seconding Councilman Gilmore. You go vote, you get one of these nifty stickers, so be sure and go get one. With nine props on there, you're really going to have to do a little homework. And there are a lot of resources online where you can go read, not the least being the Dallas Morning News. I know that'll perk up somebody in the room to hear that. So go out there, do a little research and know what you're voting for. Otherwise, you're going to go and be a little overwhelmed. I voted today and the guy standing next to me was there when I walked in and he was still there when I left. So you probably don't want to do that. MCL Grand, the acting studio is presenting Cats the Musical. Three shows from October, October twenty-fourth through the twenty-sixth. The Lewisville Lake Symphony is doing a concert on November third entitled The Ears Have Walls. This is utilizing UNT's early music ensemble, which uses instruments from back to like the fifteen hundreds. It's going to be a very unique concert. You know, regardless of your musical taste, you might find this a very interesting concert to attend, so highly recommend it. Then we have Tech Dot doing their public information meeting for the I-35 construction, and that's on October twenty-eighth at six PM. And then Acoustic Fridays, every Friday in the art gallery, seven PM, free, organized by the Visual Arts League. Got a couple of art exhibits going. Cowboy Culture, which cranked up during Western Days, is still on exhibit. If you haven't had time to take a look at it, please do. Pay attention to the poster. And over in one corner, it looks like one of the councilmen, but modesty forbids me from saying who. And then there is a exhibit by the And then, there is an exhibit by the Visual Arts League called Cowboy Up, that's in the North Corridor Gallery, which is basically the hallways there, so take a look at that. And then, one last item, if I am correct, I believe this is Assistant City Manager Donna Barron's birthday. Is that correct? Is that correct? So, this is number, is it 29?
This would be 29, sir. Thank you very much.
29. I thought it was. I thought it was.
Wow.
So, we all wish you a happy birthday, and that's all I have.
I think Claude should sing her happy birthday. I already did.
I'd prefer not, though, thank you, Councilman.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Ferguson. At this time, we will retire into closed session in accordance with Texas Government Code, Subchapter D, Section 551.072, Real Estate Property Acquisition, Section 551.087, Economic Development, Deliberation Regarding Economic Development Negotiations. Okay, reconvene the meeting. Do we have any action to be taken?
Nope.
Move to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn from Councilman Ferguson.
Second.
Second from T.J. Gilmore. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.